Anybody have a question? Priscilla, anybody raising their hand?
Yeah, somebody got it. Jim's got his hand up.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, we can hear you.
Please say.
Okay. I know the routine. My name is Jim Kosis. I live on North Mason Hill Road up in Powell, Vermont. And I just wanted to follow up on a comment that Bob had said on Thursday night pertaining to the ATV ordinance. It was during public comment, so I know since it has the subject of ATVs, I wanted him to just make sure, or actually, I prefer maybe someone else on the board other than Bob, could just explain further of the ATV ordinance will not pertain to possibly, and I just need clarification on this, will not pertain to side-by-sides, UTVs, modified vehicles, or anything else. So I'm just curious on how this whole ordinance will regulate not only ATVs, but what we're trying to also see if we can put some kind of a staff on other types of, and maybe a new word that we need to come out here is with recreational vehicles. Someone did bring up the subject of me saying something about snowmobiles, snowmobiles, but unfortunately, the traffic ordinance is what has also referenced that. So it is not that I'm coming up against the snowmobiles at all or respectful people that are out there riding. It's basically the unruly people and how do we regulate those along with what roads we're going to be opening? Thank you.
Well, I do as you asked for me, but I would like to answer just what the ordinance covers and what it does. I mean, somebody else can take the other piece. So if I spread any misinformation or caused any confusion, I apologize. ATV is defined very, very precisely by Vermont statute. And so ATV does include the kind of ATV, and I'm just going to put it in plain language, and then you can read the statute. Or I'll put the full definition in the FAQs and hopefully coming out tonight, we'll agree to put the FAQs on the web page where everybody can read them and download. But the state of Vermont defines ATV very strictly, and it does include the ATVs, the kind you straddle. It does include side-by-sides. It does include UTVs. It does not include modified pickup trucks, modified Jeeps, modified SUVs. Those are the types of things that it doesn't cover. And I believe it doesn't include dirt bikes, but I've seen two different definitions. One that says two wheels, and others says at least three wheels. So we need to confirm that. But it is Vermont statute, it is defined.
There are, there are some two-wheel dirt bike type of machines that are classified in ATV because they have the tire rating and tire size as defined by the state of Vermont ATV definition. Low, two low, no less than two low-pressure tires, 10 pounds per square inch or less. So there are.
Isn't it also?
And have to, both, both front and rear tires have to be powered.
Right, right.
They're driven, both front and. So that does eliminate dirt bikes, so to speak. But there is two-wheel ATV type of vehicles. There's manufacturers.
Okay, just to recap, so I finish up my three minutes. So you're implying or proposing that all ATVs, all UTVs, all side-by-sides, the vehicles that might just mentioned would be allowed on every single town road in the town of Powell during the hours of half an hour before sunset and a half an hour after sunset to ride wherever they please from point A to point B?
There's one minute left, Jim, just so you know.
Yeah, it's hard to use up your time, but I'm trying to give you some answers too. That's not entirely true. It is very clear in the ordinance that our roads are not trails. They're a way to get from where you are to wherever you're going to ride. And it's not back and forth riding on our roads is strictly prohibited by the ordinance, by the proposed ordinance.
Okay, now I just, I just want to say my one time. So if someone was to take a loop from Ladbrook Road, Nile School Road, Barber's Pond Road, Hidden Valley Road, back to Ladbrook Road and do a loop there that is not back and forth, that is getting from one place to another based on the way they, how do you stop something like that? So my last comment will be, where in this ordinance are you going to address enforcement?
Enforcement is actually addressed directly in the ordinance, and we're trying to address it in the FAQs as well.
Okay, so, and the draft will be available for us to see when?
I do not know. The board has to agree on that. Hopefully tonight they'll agree that we'll put the draft up on the website and the FAQs up on the website.
Okay, and the last one, Secretary of State has said that you guys, if you please, you could do a public hearing. And I just would like the reason that you were not willing to do a public hearing.
We're having public meetings on it, and we had some public hearings last year that didn't go so well. So we're taking a different approach, and we're taking the approach that was recommended to us by our town attorney. And so there's no diffusion about who I see by our town attorney. It's the same town attorney we've been using for many years predating me being on the board.
Thank you, Jim. Your time's up.
No, thank you. Thank you very much.
Next person, please raise your hand.
Are you asking me to speak?
Wendy?
Yes. My name is Wendy Luffel. I live on Northwest Hill Road, and I'd like to make some comments and ask some questions. In the rush to create a pass, the new ATV ordinance, I'm very concerned that several negative consequences are being overlooked. This issue deserves a more thoughtful, informed, and inclusive process.
Wendy, could you please speak up a little?
Here are some predictable negative consequences. The rights of Powell citizens to the quiet enjoyment of their properties is not even being considered. ATV noise can be expected to increase significantly at the expense of residents' peace and quiet. What will the cost to taxpayers be for the increased road maintenance? With more riders, there will be more road damage. Effective law enforcement, is this even possible? It has not been up to this point. What will effective law enforcement cost? What will the ATV registration fees be? It's easy to say that the cost of enforcement will be covered by registration fees, but where are the numbers to support this? What will also be the cost of an additional vote and mail-in ballots for this? There will be decreased value of homes and properties of people who live here and who came here to live to enjoy peace and quiet before ATVs were running on all the roads. There'll be the risk of collisions between ATVs. There'll be risks of harm for ATVs running on roads because they are not designed for that. There'll be risk of collisions between ATVs, autos, pedestrians, bicycles, horses, et cetera. What are the plans for enforcing registration of all ATVs, both for those who live in Powell and those who come from out of town? Who will be responsible for this? How will this be monitored? There appears to be the expectation that registration of ATVs will solve the problem of illegal use and make enforcement easier. This is based on the assumption that ATV owners, including those who currently ride illegally and at all hours, will register their ATVs and/or post their tag when riding illegally. I think this is a false assumption. There is no incentive for riders to register, especially if they plan to ride wherever and whenever they want, as they currently do in town. There's already a lack of law enforcement for illegal ATV riding. Why would you not address and correct this already existing problem before you create an even larger one?
Wendy, you took some more stuff. Can you wrap it up, please?
Why doesn't the board invite members of law enforcement to a public discussion of ATV enforcement issues? Why is the select board rushing to create a new, non-urgent, highly contested ordinance during the COVID-19 emergency? Why are the elected officials of Powell ignoring the legitimate concerns of Powell citizens?
Thank you. Okay. Who would like to answer any of those questions?
Well, I think many of those answers are in the FAQs.
Yes.
I do believe that the ordinance, what we have today is illegal use of ATVs on our town road, and it's not limited to one area. It is, it is in fact, all over Powell. And giving stickers out, and in order to get that sticker, you have to show proof of registration and insurance and the license of the rider. I think that is pretty clear, is pretty clearly going to increase enforcement. It's also going to put responsible riders on the road. The self-enforcement, and I'm not willing to dismiss self-enforcement so out of pain. I think self-enforcement, we can see it today. The clubs that are in, that are starting up, the clubs that already exist are very focused on self-enforcement, and they don't tolerate that kinds of behavior. And they, and they will turn people in as they see them. I am 100% confident in that statement. It's my opinion, but I'm very confident of it because I see it today. And I see that that's what, you know, that's what Bass has brought to the table, and that's what many of the other local clubs in other towns have passed the ordinance. So I'm very hopeful that it's going to improve things. And I don't think, and because of the fact that back and forth riding on the roads is not permitted, you shouldn't have a huge uptick in ATV usage on the roads. That should be getting from where you're going to where you're going, from where you are to where you're going. However, the previous speaker did make a very valid point. I think we need to build that in, and that is how do you present the loop? Because that's not, that's not permitted either. And that's, that was pretty good, I think. You got to take that. But I guess, and we're getting, I know we've heard some things from some law enforcement where they think it's going to be more difficult, but we've also heard a lot from law enforcement where they believe this is going to be a lot easier. I've also pulled towns that have done this, and they tell me that even the people who were against it before the ordinance, were, a lot of them, not all of them obviously, but many of them admitted that it got better after the ordinance was passed. So that's my opinion, and everybody can disagree with my opinion, but that's where I am.
Wendy, we did reach out to law enforcement. They had an invitation to be here tonight, the sheriff's department. The, to the best of my knowledge, they hadn't even read the ordinance until we handed it to them the other night. So, or the proposed ordinance. So I don't know where the information. I have reached out to David Frankum, Colin Fisher from Green Mountain National Forest. They're willing to come to a meeting. I just didn't think that we were at that point yet to have them down through to a meeting. They're both, one is the regional director and the other one is the district director for enforcement through the Green Mountain National Forest.
And I'm deliberately not giving, dropping names of who I talked to because I just want to respect their anonymity, respect the, you know, that they have to report at the chain. And even law enforcement officials can disagree on what the ordinance do and whether or not ATV usage is safe. But from my standpoint, reality is not optional. We have ATVs on our roads today. Not doing nothing, I don't believe is an option. I think we do have a dangerous situation. Whatever we can do to make sure that the riders who are on our roads are registered, are insured, and are safe, responsible riders, and weed out the ones that aren't, is going to do us all better. And I believe that, and I believe that this ordinance does accomplish that.
And I think if they have an ordinance, it'll be easier for the police and the sheriff to follow through with our ordinance, because right now there really isn't one. So they probably just, they're not going to chase them. They don't want anybody to get hurt.
Yeah, so with the reality that no chase policy will stay in effect.
Yes.
So that's, that's just going to be true.
Is there anybody else out there? Please raise your hand.
I'm going to get to say something like that.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
As far as the enforcement goes, my understanding is be similar to fishing game forces. What they're going to do is they're going to be set up in certain areas and where people are, they know people are going in and out, and then they will, they will see whose legal and who is. They're not going to be patrolling around in the woods looking for some vagabond. They're going to be checking the ins and outs. By doing that, they'll, the person is, most people will be more comfortable if they're registered, insured, and they got their sticker. They come riding right down through, or another person will be trying to hide. But that's, they're going to enforce that. Works pretty well with fishing game. They get a lot of people who are breaking the law by doing checkpoints and things like that. That's all.
Anything else from anybody? The next person, please.
Oh, let's start to figure it out.
Margos, please state your full name.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It's, I'm Margos' husband, Julius Rawson-Mall, Carpenter Hill Road. Thank you for this meeting. I appreciate it. This is a very small point, but I'm just curious. The state does require posting of all roads that are open to ATVs, and I don't know what the posting requirements are. You know, how, whether it's every half mile, every quarter mile, you know, what? And I just wondered what the ordinance, how the ordinance addresses the requirement, the state requirement of posting that this road is open to ATVs. And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
The ordinance does actually say it, and it cites the statute, that all roads that would be open will be posted, will have signage and will be posted. And that's the, pretty much the extent of what it says in the ordinance, and then we have to.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a good night, sir. Anyone else? Please raise your hand. Sherry, please state your first and last name.
My name is Sherry Olenkowski. I also live on North Basin Hill. I just typed my question. I'm referring to what Bob just said, that he stated he has seen examples of self-enforcement. Could he give us any examples without names? Also, you just renewed the sheriff's contract. Did it include anything for this ordinance? Did it have any clause that said this ordinance may pass and we'll need such and such? Thank you.
So in our sheriff's contract, which we have not signed yet, but we agreed to sign, it says that they will adhere to our ordinance, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And then, I think your other one was examples of self-enforcement.
Right, thank you.
And not only did Michael Smith, who is, is at Pennington Trail Cruisers, I think.
Yep.
And he came down and spoke to us last year about it. I've also seen it in the ATV club, Facebook club. And for, and so everybody understands where I am with ATVs. I have never personally bought an ATV. The one that I own came with the farm. It's very old. So I'm not an ATV enthusiast. However, I joined in order to gather information, some of the Facebook clubs, and you can see them publicly, including individuals for unsafe and illegal conduct, and reaching out to others to find out who they are. And I see it, I see that quite a bit. Of a lot of people who want to protect their right to ride really think of this, and these are the ones that we're trying to do something for, think of this as a family-oriented recreational activity, not a bunch of outlaws out there looking to tear up roads and fields and that sort of thing. And the more you get those kinds of responsible people on the road, the more self-enforcement you're going to get. I mean, I am totally confident that that's going to happen.
Thank you.
One thing, one thing that I think is an extremely good possibility of something that can happen or probably will happen actually, if an ordinance is passed and carried by the town after a townwide vote, is if an organization such as Bassett comes in to, oh, and develops some trails through private or Green Mountain National Forest or whatever. There's a stipulation, I know in New Hampshire and Maine both have this.
Hello, hello.
On width of the vehicle that can be.
Excuse me, but Mike is talking, but we're with you.
There's a stipulation and guideline on the overall width of side-by-side or ATV. So.
Okay, so that's where the answer is next.
The leaf is that if an organization like Bassett, I'm just using them as an example, not saying they're even approached us, I'm just throwing it out there that that's just an example. They'll come in and pipes in into the ground, I'm sure, to limit the modified off-road vehicles that, I got, I get several pictures over the weekend, of modified off-road vehicles doing the damage in the woods way more. And I have spent a lot of hours on off-county road, and the modified off-road vehicles do way more damage than a side-by-side or an ATV, or even a dirt bike for that matter. Those guys are tearing things to pieces.
I don't know how true that is, but my understanding is the ATV groups don't necessarily get along with the modified.
Not at all.
They're, they're not. They're not all one of the same. They're very different, very different organizations.
And that's, that's just a thought that I've had recently. I know that in Maine and New Hampshire, there are, in the state of Vermont, there's a, the statute says not wider than 64 inches wide. So there are ways to limit the modified off-road vehicles. And I believe that'll happen. I believe if someone comes in and develops trails, then they're going to, they're going to take care of that.
And that's where a lot of the off-road and trail enforcement comes from, it comes from the clubs.
Right, right.
Because they, not only do they want to protect their sport, they, and their recreational activity, they want to protect the trails.
Okay, so it's almost seven up, so is there somebody else?
Renee Williams of Ginnon Report.
Yes.
So.
Okay, please state your name and ask your question or statement.
Renee?
It looks like she's muted.
I think our host had to unmute her and let her know.
I did.
Renee, are you there?
Ms. Williams?
I've been having trouble after half an hour. I missed the whole meeting basically because I haven't been able to connect. Hello?
Hello.
We can hear you.
Hello, I was, you heard me before, hello?
Yes.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, I just wanted to, I have written something. I was gonna, I didn't think I'd be on the phone, but I just wanted to say that I believe that this new ordinance will negatively affect more people than it will benefit. Last week on a post on Front Port Forum, a letter was sent to the select board, which was signed by 168 residents supporting open roads. That means 3,200 did not. And the small majority of citizens, I believe, want to change the look and feel of our country's town for their perceived right to ride recreational vehicles. This new ordinance will likely increase the possibility that large numbers of ATVs will drive through our town with little regard for our rights, while creating excess noise on safe driving, unenforceable laws, and potentially changing the character of a beautiful Vermont town. It is still illegal to ride ATVs on most panel roads, yet that doesn't seem to stop anyone. If the town decides to pass this ordinance to open all roads, a Bassett Club will likely try to connect our town to a statewide system of trails, encouraging even more ATV riders from our towns as well as from out of state to use Powell roads. Enforcement is basically non-existent. This appears to be the number one challenge for all the towns that have changed their ATV ordinances to allow ATVs on town roads. Our select board, and I know this was sort of covered before, but I couldn't connect to end, but about is suggesting that the use of identification stickers will make enforcement easier. An officer will see that sticker and be able to get license and registration information at a glance. But an officer will have to be present to see the sticker. It is a random and rare occurrence now that an officer is even present when the ATV rides by. So who's going to pay for the additional enforcement costs for tolls on additional roads? The select board says the stickers will cover the extra costs. Will the out-of-town offender pay their fines? There are no economic benefits for the town. The town of Powell has no restaurant stores or gasoline pumps except for where it is illegal to ride. I am opposed, obviously, to opening all the town roads to ATVs and believe it is so important to seriously think about the quality of life issues raised by expanded ATV use on the roads, on the town roads. So that's my thing, and I'm just making my statement for the record. Sorry to be so obtrusive at the end, but I was very frustrated because I couldn't get on. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay, you're welcome. That's it.
702?
Right, 702.
We started.
All right, next person, please.
This is Merrill Bent. I don't, I'm having a hard time tracking who's next, but I'm happy to proceed with my comment.
Go ahead, Merrill.
Thank you. As I said, my name's Merrill Bent. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Wilmington, Campbell, Benton, Stasney, and I represent numerous panel residents. I just, I do want to start by commending the select board for taking steps to bring law enforcement into this conversation. I really do hope that the discussion with law enforcement does occur in a public setting once we've all had a chance to see a draft ordinance so that we can have an informed, in-depth conversation about suggested revisions, about the potential challenges to enforcement, and so that members of the public can get direct answers to their questions about the challenges of enforcement. My clients maintain that that type of discussion is really better suited for a public hearing so that everyone can have their questions answered. But we nonetheless appreciate the move towards more information and transparency in this process and hope to see more of it going forward. I do note briefly that conversations by the select board can't be on an anonymous basis. You know, open government dictates otherwise. And I renew the other questions I've posed on behalf of my clients in a prior meeting and in writing to the board, which have not been directly answered by the board or in the FAQs provided. My question tonight, my specific question at this point is, does the contract with the sheriff specify what hours the sheriff is going to be patrolling for illegal ATV conduct?
I don't believe there's hours specified on any of their patrols. Therefore, they can take and do random, random patrols throughout the town. There's no specific time or dates or days of the weeks. Therefore, people don't get comfortable with seeing them every day at a certain time. That's the whole purpose of that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else, Priscilla?
I'd like to.
Rick?
I'm muted. Here I am. Am I?
After quarter after.
Am I on, can you hear me now?
Yes, Rick.
Could you speak a little bit, please?
I'm sorry, again?
Could you speak up a little bit, please?
Sure, I'll turn my volume right up. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I'm very happy to see that the board is treating this matter seriously and with consideration of all issues. I read the FAQ from the June meeting. I have an observation. First of all, I have an emotional reaction because I live on North Powell Road just near West Meadow Court. And when people come off Route 7 automobiles, you know, people probably driving across the New York State. Because I live on North Panel Road just near West Meadow Court, and when people come off Route Seven automobiles, you know, people probably driving across the New York State. Um, but they just floor the accelerator, a lot of them, when they come around the corner by the schoolhouse, and by the time they pass my house, which is like a hundred yards. Um, on, they're doing over fifty. Um, and then there's the rise by Peckham at a blind corner. And I'm very concerned that, that speeding people are gonna hit some of these, um, especially these kids on ATVs, but you know, that, that, that's an issue.
There should be no kids on ATVs.
Not without an adult.
Not without an adult.
Okay, but what, the a- adult and the kids ride together in a side-by-side or they're, anyway.
Well, no, by kids, I think we mean that, it's, uh, and sorry to break in, uh, but, uh, it. You need to have a license, so that means if you've taken driver's ed, you could be sixteen. Uh, but, but if you're under eighteen, you also have to take, take in a, a, an ATV, a state sanctioned ATV safety class. Or be currently enrolled, you're under eighteen, and you need to have the license if you've been through driver's ed.
Thank you, thank you for the clarification. Um, at my age, anybody under forty-five is a kid. Um, but I understand what you're saying, but what I'm saying is people speeding on North Panel Road. It's a windy road with lots of rises on it that are blind, and I'm just, whether it's a kid or an adult, it, I just, I'm very worried about that, but that's. That's one issue. The other issue is, and it's not an issue, it's an observation that the town seems to be very divided on this issue. That a lot of people are at one extreme, uh, or another. There's not too many in the middle. And as an elected body, perhaps your path might be toward compromise. Or, um, a, a measured approach. For example, does, uh, it, could there be a test period? Does it have to be seven days a week? Could it be weekends only for six months or twelve months to see how it goes? Um, does it have to be a half an hour before sunrise to a half hour after sunset? Um, that's, that's a big day for people who are affected by the noise. So I'm, I'm, I'm urging you to consider a staggered approach, um, a, a step-by-step approach. Rather than jumping in the deep end of the pool all at once. Um, that's my suggestion. Thank you for, uh, for the time.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
More people.
You have, you have two more?
Yeah.
We'll take the last two, Priscilla, is that okay?
That's fine. It's fine, I set the quarter after. Mary, please state your full name. Mary? Something's wrong, she can't un.
Can you unmute her for? Mary, can you hear us?
Mary, if you could hear us, it looks like you're unmuted now, so if you start talking, they should be able to hear you, uh, assuming your mic was.
All right, can you just type your question?
If it's, yeah, if it's a question, you can type it.
Yeah.
In the chat.
Go to the chat box.
Typing. Next one. Next one, please.
That's it?
There's an unlock. So thank you for your public comments. Mark, please state your full name.
Mark Freeman, Northwest Hill Road. Um, I came to the first ATV, you know, listening group.
Are you, please speak up into your device.
I am speaking up.
Okay, we're having a hard time hearing you.
You know, if your, if your goal at the first meeting was to divide the town, um, then I would call that meeting a success. I listened to you guys talking and it sounds like wishful thinking. That enforcement in nighttime is gonna be not an issue. It's an issue now. Could you please solve the issue now? I would have much more faith that you actually. Could deal with enforcement if you could deal with enforcement now. I, I don't see that. I know people that say they put up barriers on their land and ATVers take the barriers down. I see people that say that people ride at ten, eleven, twelve, one o'clock and wake them up at one o'clock in the morning. There is no enforcement. Right now, you can ride on any town road in panel at any time. Doesn't matter your age, doesn't matter the time of day, doesn't matter if your machine has a muffler on it. I, I don't understand how you think all of this is just gonna disappear if you bring more people in. You know, why do you have to bring more people in? Can't you solve the problem that you have now? I think a lot of people who are unhappy would be much more happy if they saw some enforcement now. Because I think most people think that it's just gonna get worse. Um, and it's not the families that are riding quietly in the daytime that we're worried about. It's the people that don't care about the law. That ride in national forests where they're not supposed to, that ride on private land where they're not supposed to, that ride at all hours. Without, I mean, can you tell me of one instance where someone's been, you know, reprimanded for this behavior?
We don't have law enforcement here right now to tell us if they issued a, a ticket or not.
Any people you know, any of your friends? You guys are all seemingly know a lot about ATVers. Can you tell me?
I do not. I don't even ride an ATV.
So, one thing I wanna, I wanna point out is, uh, the, uh, the, what I have said is not that the after-hours activity. I, I have not said the after-hours activity will go away with this ordinance. Um, that is, but to me, that's separate from people wanting to pursue their hobby in a family-oriented and, and safe way. Um, um, a lot of those after-hour parties, and we've seen the pictures, are on dirt bikes, are on SUVs, are on pickup trucks and SUV, and, and ATVs. So, uh, that is definitely an enforcement issue. And, and I don't see this ordinance solving it, just like it can't solve DWI. Um, but it certainly will solve a lot of the daytime issues and a lot of the, uh, uh, a lot of the, uh, the self-enforcement that happens during the day. Uh, in getting those legal riders on the road. So you, you are correct that there's things that are happening after hours. But I don't see that becoming better or worse because of this ordinance.
You're gonna bring more people in, that's not gonna make it better. You can't enforce it now. How are you gonna be able to enforce more people later?
I'm not sure.
To think that it's just gonna get better because you bring more people in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna end public comment. We went fifteen minutes over. It is now seven fifteen and we're gonna start our work session. Thank you for everybody that called in and had a statement or asked questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Did you wanna start over or did you wanna start back on number three?
I, I guess I can start on number three, but maybe I should just share that.
Do we really wanna go over the FAQs again?
Well, I guess you don't have to. You can go straight to the.
I mean, we're gonna post them on the website.
Okay.
I, I think we, we all know that now, now, this is, this is our work session now.
Right.
And we know what the people who asked questions, but I must have come up with a couple of new ones.
I did come up with a couple of factors and I'm trying to add more. So I am trying to address the questions, so maybe I'll just go to the.
Let's go to the new ones.
Go to the new.
Sure. We already know what they're gonna say. We do, this is our session now.
Yeah.
So the new ones aren't on, correct?
Uh, no, the new ones aren't on there. I'm, yeah, I'm, and I'm, uh, what I'm trying to do is keep track of all the questions that we get. And, and the ones that aren't over the answer. Now, there's a big difference between asking a new question and not believing the answer. Right. Um, I, that, I can't do much about that, not buying the answer. Um, uh. Um, so I, I'm gonna start with, I can't remember where I started in, but I'm gonna start with number nineteen. Which is, my child has a learner's permit. Will he, she be allowed to use ATV on town roads? The answer is no. All key ATV drivers using town roads must have a valid driver's license.
Plus, if they're under the age of eighteen, they have to have them.
Uh, correct, and if they're under the age of eighteen, you have to be, you have to be, uh, you have to show completion of or current enrollment in. A state sanctioned, uh, uh, ATV safety class. In, in order to get the sale. Uh, twenty, shouldn't the board enforce current laws before pursuing an ATV ordinance? So my answer to that is for many reasons, listed in both the ordinance and in this FAQ document, uh, this was one of the earlier answers. The board believes enforcement of many of the current fractions could be made easier by passage of this ordinance. So, uh, the focus on enforcement really requires an ordinance for it to be able to do that. We've been hearing that for years from law enforcement, many. So this is also the advice we were getting from law enforcement. Uh, late-night illegal activity speaks for the last color. Late-night illegal activity is not condoned by anyone nor related to this ordinance. Driving under the influence is illegal today and will continue to be so with passage of this ordinance. This ordinance encourages safe and responsible use of ATVs within the town panel at prescribed times of the day. Raises revenue for enforcement and makes non-compliant ATVs easily identifiable. So, uh, those are the, uh, uh, those are the big things that, that help with the enforcement. All right, um, so, uh, twenty-one, does this ordinance apply to dirt bikes, off-road vehicles that are not ATVs? Like, I answered that, but I put it into the ATV order. I put it in the FAQs. Uh, such as a modified truck, SUV, that sort of thing. And the answer is no, this is strictly an ATV ordinance. For a description of what an ATV is, as defined by the state of Vermont, see, please. Please see the proposed ordinance, and the ordinance references the Vermont statute that defines it. But generally speaking, uh, if it's a two-wheel-drive vehicle, both wheels must have certain tire pressure and must have, uh, and, and have power to them, so that does not include dirt bikes. Uh, but mostly when people in this room and those at home think of ATVs, you're thinking of an ATV, a side-by-side, a UTV. And that's, uh, almost all of them besides the, uh, the two-wheel. But we don't see for many of those two-wheels. Um, will Troller be allowed to drive ATVs on town roads? There was a lot of questions about that, and then again, no, all ATV driver, uh, uh, drivers must have a valid driver's license. And again, must be at least, uh, uh, and if you're under eighteen, you have to show proof that you're enrolled in or have completed a state-recognized ATV class. Um, another, another one that got, uh, that I, that I had heard, and I'm gonna state this one. I live on a dead-end road. Why would this road be open to ATVs? Since back-and-forth riding is not permitted per the ordinance, the only people would be permitted to ride up your road would be either, one. Those who live on the road to travel to their riding places, or two, if they've invited someone over to ride on their property. Um, other than that, if you see an ATV on your dead-end road and there's no other property owned up there that could possibly, uh, that could possibly be a, a riding area. That's non-compliant. Um, we don't want panel roads used as trails. ATVs are not intended to be used on roads. So again, per the ordinance, back-and-forth riding is strictly prohibited. The ordinance does not make trails out of panel roads. The ordinance allows citizens to use panel roads to get to and from their, uh, uh, riding locations. And if we can figure out a way to get them in there, to and from gas and food. Right now, that's very problematic because the only gas and food is on Route Seven. And Route Seven and Three Forty-Six are off-limits today and will be off-limits tomorrow. If this ordinance passes, they're still off-limits. Those are s- uh, federal and state roads, and by, by, uh, by state law and by federal law, those are not, uh, ATVs are not permitted and will not, will not be permitted. Even with the passage of the.
As, as well as the railroad tracks.
And as well as the railroad tracks, and that's, uh.
That's a high traffic.
And, uh, and, and I addressed that in earlier, in an earlier.
Right, right.
And so I'll go through the, the newer questions that we got, and I'll continue to add questions and answers to the best of my ability here, and we'll keep that updated on the, on the website with the board agrees to go ahead and put this on the website. We probably wanna run by the.
I was gonna, shouldn't we send it to the lawyer first?
All right, and that's it for that, so now we can flip over to the ordinance. All right, so, uh, the starting point on the ordinance is the, uh, is the DLCT's, uh, uh, model policy. The way the DLCT has structured their model policies, you can do pretty much anything with their, with their model policy. It, it references the appropriate statutes, it identifies what an ATV is, and then, and then it has sections for you to modify specific to your town. And that means anything that you wanted to do. If you wanna shut down all ATVs, if you wanted to open it up, if you wanna list the road, you can, you can use model policy to do that. And I, I'm just trying to address some of the other concerns we got. I, I had heard, uh, some people suggesting that the, that, uh, that the ATV. That the DLCT had been, uh, debunked or, or, I forget what the word, the terminology was. That, that, that this was not a valid way of approach. I think it is. I think these, these things are happening. So I'm gonna go ahead and read the definition, just sort of, it has, all-terrain vehicle or ATV means non, any non-highway recreational vehicle except snowmobiles. Having no less than two low-pressure tires, two, two, ten pounds per square inch or, or less. Not wider than sixty-four inches with two-wheel ATVs having permanent full-time power to both wheels. And having a dry weight of less than seventeen hundred pounds when used for cross-country travel on trails. Or on any one of the following or a combination thereof. Land, water, snow, ice, marsh, swampland, and natural terrain. An ATV on a public highway shall be considered a motor vehicle as defined in sections or this title. Only for the purposes of those offenses listed in subdivisions and a whole lot of numbers, so, uh, forgive me, I'm gonna skip over them. An ATV shall not include electric personal assistance, uh, assistive mobility device. ATVs used in agriculture, forestry, and commercial use are exempt. So, so that's what it means. Um, and then we go into some, uh, some, uh, you know, enforcement officer.
Yeah, I can read through the whole thing.
I'll just read through the whole thing. Yeah, that's my coffee. Okay, enforcement officer means any law enforcement officer certified by the Vermont Criminal Training Council. C, operate includes any attempt to operate and shall be construed to cover all matters and things connected with the presence and use. Of all-terrain vehicles within the town, whether they be in motion or at rest. AVASA means the Vermont All-Terrain Vehicle Sportsman Association. And, uh, uh, I don't believe we have any of that sort of requirements in here, but we did define it. E, uh, other definitions found in twenty-three BSA three-five oh one are incorporated herein by reference. Section four, uh, town highways open pursuant to twenty-three BSA three-fifty, the use of ATVs is authorized on all pound, on all posted town roads located in town power with the exception of roads listed below. ATVs are allowed on all town roads between thirty minutes after sunset, and actually, I think I was gonna change that. Um, I think we wanted to move this to something that was easier to enforce and make it a time. Like six to ten or eight to ten or something along those.
Less to half hour before, half hour after.
That is.
Um, I, I just think that's harder to enforce, because then you have to look it up, and it's, uh, it, it's gas per one posted site, and they do keep track of, uh, you know, sunrise, sunset. Uh, but it seems to me that the other ordinance I read and, uh, uh, I meant to change that, my apologies. I think I wanna put times in here, and I wanna come up with, what do we think is a good time?
I know. I don't, I don't. I, I don't think starting any earlier than, than. Seven in the morning would be a really good idea.
I think I agree with that. Well, it's still light out at nine, um, uh, in the summer.
But it, you know, seven, seven. So they're also, seven to nine, seven to nine thirty. Um, you know. I don't, I don't, and, and you, you're right, hunting, they're in, you know, somebody's using it for hunting. But I gotta be honest, they're, they're not the ones that people are gonna be complaining about, so they're. I'm worried about the guys that are.
But the, the weekend warrior people.
And most of, most of the people that are riding on the weekends with their group or club or whatever are, I think Gagey can attest to this, they're coming through, um, eight, nine, ten o'clock in the morning. So a seven o'clock time in the morning would be plenty early enough.
And, uh, the evening, I'm thinking of ten, because we do have headlights, and we do require that headlights are on when you're driving on the roads, even the day.
But, but some people that have to get up really early, I, you know, I don't know, you gotta kinda try to find that happy medium.
They should be off at dawn, or what?
Nine PM, seven AM, ten AM.
No, that's, you know, that, that's,
I think that's very reasonable.
I mean, that gives them fourteen hours. Right, by, you know, I mean, that gives them, you know, fourteen-hour window.
But I was gonna start at eight forty-five. So I think, I think seven to nine sound good. And that, actually, I'm close. Alright, so we're gonna change the times, the, uh, so the times in Moong would be thirty minutes, uh, uh, after sunset, thirty minutes prior to sunrise, that's the, uh, that's the not allowed times. Instead, we're gonna allow it to be, allowed travel seven AM to nine PM. Alright, uh, except by order of the state of Vermont, ATVs may not be operated on any state highway in the town of Powell. Signs shall be posted to notify operators of ATVs of permitted hours of operation and to notify motorists that ATVs may be traveled through these roads. Pursuant to twenty-three BSA three five oh six, all town highways that are not being maintained and allowed by the town for use by motor vehicles during the snow season are open to ATV traffic. In addition, state and federal highways are not, do not allow the operation of ATVs. Uh, this wasn't in the model, but I put it on here as, uh, as, in random bold, and I'd like to keep it that way. Note that ATV travel is not permitted on state highways. US Route seven and Route three forty-six, uh, are not permitted.
Should we also put in the railroad track as well? Because they do use that all the time.
I know.
That's how they get to Stewart's unfortunate.
Yeah, that's true.
That's how they get from Massachusetts, I hear.
No.
Yeah?
No.
I followed him.
Well, that person's probably lived, that person's probably lived here, been in Mass. The guys that are coming in out of Mass are trailer, ninety, nine ninety-five.
In Valley Road, Town Route seven. On three forty-six. The north-west road there. Right into Mass.
Okay, so I've got, uh, riding, riding on along or along the railroad tracks is strictly prohibited and extremely dangerous.
I'm sure it is a personal law.
To look up and look up. A statute of manners.
A crossing, a crossing a state highway must be at approved location at or close to a ninety-degree angle to the state highways. Today, we do not have any approved locations. So crossing Route seven and crossing three forty-six with passage of this ordinance will still be illegal. But, but, we could work with the state to find crossing locations, and that, that could happen after the passage of the ordinance.
And that's a lot of what VASDA does, if they get, if they incorporate with a ATV group within the town.
Okay. Alright, section five, speed limits, additional rules and conditions of traffic control devices. ATV operators shall comply with all state and federal laws regarding ATV operations in addition to the following requirements regarding the operation of ATVs in the town of Powell. All posted speed limit and traffic control devices on town highways shall apply to the operation of ATVs with a maximum speed allowed of twenty-five miles per hour. Notwithstanding the above, no person shall drive an ATV on a public right-of-way at a speed greater than is reasonable and prudent under the conditions, having regard for the, to the actual and potential havoc, hazards there existing. In every event, speed shall be controlled as necessary to avoid collisions with any person, vehicle, bicycle, ATV, or any other object on or adjacent to the road, uh, to the road. Additional rules. A, roads are not open for back-and-forth riding. Roads are open to get from and, to and from off-road riding areas and to and from gas and food. Uh, I think I need to think of some wording to beef that up, so that those loops are not, are not permitted.
I agree.
That was a very good point. Uh, be respectful to all town residents and their, oh, did you put that comment?
No, we'll be.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure exactly how to say it.
It shouldn't be allowed.
We're in the south.
At non-road, like riding locations. It would be harder to enforce, but, uh, that will be difficult to enforce, but if you're caught doing that, then you, you, you're losing your stick. That's used in the roads as, as a, as a, as a trail, and that is explicitly and strictly prohibited. Be respectful to all town residents and their land. Free pedestrians and neighborhood residents with respect at all times, always, uh, always remain courteous. Do not ride on private land without permission. Helmets are required to ride all VASA trails or participate in all VASA events on an ATV unless the ATV has an appropriate roll cage and seatbelt. And down in the enforcement section, there's another, there's another similar one that says, in order to be on roads, you have to have a helmet on, unless you have seatbelts, uh, and, and a roll cage. No riders under the age of sixteen are allowed on the roads. No littering, what you go in with, you leave with. Uh, residents using their own property are not required by this ordinance to be registered, insured, or to have accounts. Their agricultural use is also included. Travel must be with traffic, using the right side of the travel right lane, no riding on the shoulders, no passing, no cutting corners, no horsing around, no wheelies, zigzagging, spinning out on gravel, none of that. Uh, when approaching horseback riders, you must pull over and shut off your vehicle and silence the motor until they pass or wave you forward. Horseback riders have the right of way. ATVs may not be operated on town highways and trails during spring breakup or when wet conditions will result in damage to the roads and trails. The select board will publish opening and closing dates. Uh, as we'll use, uh, input from Joel.
I was just gonna say, should, should we have that actually added in there, um,
Per the town,
Per the town highway form,
Forming, yeah.
Or town highway department?
And that's just, that, that's just,
Just looks very empty.
Public opening.
Like, like breakdown or whatever, different kinds.
Right.
And be like, unpassable or whatever.
A, ATVs may not be operating on town roads between the hours of, and that's where we have to put the hours in. Um, and that's, we said, uh, nine,
Nine PM and seven AM.
And seven AM. ATVs may not be operated on town, I, I'm sorry.
Let's be, we can ride them all night, nine PM.
They start with the seven in the morning. No, that's, the, the key to it, but, but it's kind of a dumb book.
Yeah, I know that.
Now, to be clear, that means on-town roads. You own your property, you ride wherever, whenever you want. And if you're off-town roads and you have permission to ride, that's, like, whenever you want, but, uh,
Well, we can control private property, right.
You'll have a hard time with that. ATVs may not be operated on town roads between, and do we wanna make, do we wanna put, uh, times of the year? I thought we did. Um, I, I've got it right now, you cannot operate between December second and April thirtieth, but is that extending too far, not far enough? Does, does anybody really ride in December?
Well, I think, I think in order,
I did have one person ask why he decided to do that. And I said it was to protect the roads and to protect the safety, especially throughout their snow falling or removing snow.
But there's the potential for hunters in the middle of December.
Do we wanna say with the exception, with some exceptions made for hunting? Well, 'cause to speak to one of the, one of the callers, it's, uh, uh, I, I know we don't have, like, like, uh, Sundays, there's no riding, and I don't wanna put that in. Uh, but, but what about times of the year? Maybe we oughta, uh, respect those that don't wanna hear it. You know, seventies, oh, you know, done.
Well, that's, that's, I, I made some notes, Bob, from, from the callers, and I kind of wanted to throw some of those in there at, at certain times.
Okay.
Um, as, as we're going through it, to be honest with you. I, I don't, I don't have a problem limiting the, the usage, but where do we draw a line? Do we say December first, um, through April thirtieth?
That's actually what I have.
Right, I mean, you know, do we use that? Which, which, honestly, that, that would kind of coincide with the spring breakup and win, winter maintenance.
You, you mean, yeah, spring breakup being April.
Right, 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 right.
And then, and then it could be a little, depending on the year.
Right, right.
And then, then it'll be up to, and then,
Right, and we can extend that, for sure, because we have that clause in there. But with a, with a December through April thirtieth, we should be away from the, the mud, excuse me, in the spring, and we shouldn't have been into too many snowstorm road, I'd say, you know, slippery road conditions by December first.
Yeah, it's not, uh, rarely you have snow.
Yeah, you might get a couple.
Even though last year, excuse me. Alright, so, uh, I think that, are we good on December first, April thirtieth?
I love your writing, though, there's so many towns, I don't care. I'll let you write on my own.
Let's see up the town.
I think that, well, a little older.
And then, uh, next one.
We don't get any snow anyway.
Yes. Uh, through May fifteenth? So if we push this out fifteen more days, we, we've got it done.
Yeah.
That's good information, that's, and that's, that would stay consistent with it, well, that's, exactly. Yep.
You said March what?
May fifteenth, alright.
First to May fifteenth.
Yeah. Thanks, Linda.
So, and, and then only, only one of those dates was relevant here, and that was the end, right, the major. Alright, um, hand signals are required to indicate all turns and stops in the absence of street legal turn, turn signal lights. So a lot of ATVs, most, don't have the turn signal, so you have to use hand signals. Uh, the select board has the right to add or close roads at any time following public discussion and comment. So once this gets, uh, uh, passed, uh, if we find that particular roads are particularly problematic, we can put them on, they do not ride. All traffic signs that are maintained by the town of Powell, speed normal roadside. Uh, so, uh, sections of state, of state roads are, are not governed by the town of Powell. And this, again, and I put this in here multiple times, in red, in bold, Route three forty-six and US seven are off-limits to ATVs. And now we're gonna move on to the next section, which is, "Operation on public property and cemetery. ATV shall not be operated on the following public property." Pursuant to twenty-three BSA thirty-five oh six, uh, section ten, ATVs shall not be operated in any burial ground in town or county. Um, and then I move on to section nine, violations, fees, and penalties. So we got a little bit more, and there's a little bit of redundancy in here, but I, I, I don't mind redundancy. I, I think it helps stress what is and isn't allowed. It is a violation of this ordinance to operate or to permit an ATV owned by the person or under his or her control to be operated on any town highway, one, if the operator is under sixteen years of age. That's an ordinance violation of twenty-three BSA thirty-five ten. Two, while the operator or passenger is not wearing a helmet, ordinance violation under twenty-three BSA thirty-five oh ten, uh, thirty-five ten, unless the ATV is equipped with seatbelts and an appropriate roll cage. So that would be your typical side-by-side, it's got the roll cage.
Right.
Uh, uh,
Three.
Three, with young passengers aboard who are not properly restrained, and that's, uh, twenty-three BSA twelve fifty-eight. Four, without having the headlights turned on at all time, uh, headlight or headlights turned on at all times, and that's an ordinance violation of twenty-three BSA thirty-five ten. Five, on any town road if the operator or owner does not properly display a town decal on the ATV, that's an ordinance violation, again, under thirty-five ten, same, the same, uh, same words.
So, a note from, from a caller. Um, where should we put on that, on number five? Is that where we should put in that all town authorized vehicles, town decal, however you wanna say it? Is that where we should put in where they have the size of their non, or a reflective number on three sides of the vehicle?
Uh, I, I don't think so, but let's ask our attorney, because I believe that belongs in a process document for how to implement this. I have not seen in any ordinance that requires the, the decals, and a lot of them do. I've not seen in any way where they actually describe what the possible decal is or what they look like. So I think, I think that's something that, uh, you know, should the ordinance pass, we investigate and we, and we, we, uh, decide how much we're gonna charge.
So, so should we, to clarify, a lot of the callers and their questions, and a lot of emails that we've had, should we clarify that, right, in, in some, in, in the frequently asked questions, FAQs? The size of the, of the numbers, and, and, you know, reflective number that we're gonna say is four-inch minimum, whatever it is on three sides of the vehicle, should we put that in our FAQs?
Yeah, that's probably good. So, uh, and, and that'll be a, and we'll, we'll be, uh, uh, upfront, obviously, about it, and that's gonna be, uh, the board's vision is, but this could change when we implement the policy.
Yeah.
And I'm also thinking things like, should we decide that it's thirty-five dollars? We should also figure out how much those decals cost and add that to the cost.
Right.
So it's thirty-five, uh, uh, and I'm throwing thirty-five out there, we don't know how much we're gonna be charging for it. But if it's thirty-five dollars and it costs five bucks for the decal, then we're charging thirty-five for the decal plus five bucks for the, uh, thirty-five for the registration, like, to the town.
Right.
And then five bucks for the stickers.
Right.
Be of speed, or just do forty bucks for a sticker.
Uh, well, that's true, but I'm, all I'm representing for obviously. Yes, but, uh, what, what I'm getting at is, we need to decide how much we need in order to do signage, and do that, and charge that, and then figure out how much it's gonna cost to actually create the stickers and add it to the cost.
Right.
So before we come up with the final cost, we need to make sure all costs go. Uh, does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Am I good?
I, I like the idea of a certain number for the, you know, it's five dollars for the decal or whatever it costs us, and then, and then it's a certain number for, I mean, I, I have kind of a fee schedule in my head. Um, the town residents, uh, a non-town Vermont resident, and then somebody out of state, I think there's three tiers, in, in my opinion. I think there's three tiers that we should put at.
So town, out of town, and out of state.
Exactly, exactly, you know, but I, I do, I do think, I do think when somebody from Pennington or Shastler that has friends here shouldn't have to pay as much as somebody who lives in Winter, Connecticut. Just, I think. Well, it's basically, right, twenty-five thousand dollar machines.
Yeah, or, or that more.
Yeah, so, uh, okay, I'll also, uh, against the law, uh, uh, what do we, uh, remember, all of these things are, it is a violation for any of these. Uh, so I just wanna remind everybody that these are all violations, not requirements. Uh, while the operator is under the influence of drugs or intoxicated beverages, and that's an ordinance violation under thirty-five oh six, speed six, and that's twenty-three BSA thirty-five. In any, as seven, in any manner intended or reasonably to be expected to harass, bribe, or pursue any wildlife. Uh, I'm gonna stop reading the, uh, the statutes.
Yeah.
Uh, eight, in a, in a careless or negligent manner or a manner that endangers persons or property. Um, you know, nine, ATV operators must have a valid driver's license in order to operate an ATV on town highways. Ten, while not registered in accordance with the laws of this state or the state or province in which the ATV owner resides. Eleven, while not insured in accordance with the laws of this state, uh, if the ATV is required to be registered in this, in this state. Uh, now that's, the amounts of insurance, I forget what they are, but they're defined in twenty-three BSA eight hundred through eight ten, and it's the same as, uh, any other order. Um, unless equipped with a, at least one headlight and a red rear light in working order, brakes in good mechanical condition, and any windshield free from sharp or jagged edges. Uh, it doesn't have to have a windshield, but if it does have a windshield, it, it can't have sharp or jagged edges. Uh, while equipped with an efficient muffler, or while equipped with an exhaust system with a cutout, bypass, or similar device, or with a spark arrest or reboot or modify, or if the maximum machine operating noise is more than eighty-two decibels on a scale at fifty feet in a normal operating environment. So there are, uh, and these are, these are, uh, uh, in, in the, in the Vermont state statutes.
Yeah.
It is twenty-three BSA thirty-five oh. It is twenty-three VSA thirty-five oh five D, and most ATVs follow this.
Just know most, most motorcycles itself, I thought it was ninety-two or ninety-four, that's the, from the back.
I, I think motorcycles might actually be allowed, and I think they are allowed, I'm just, I've heard them come in this second. By any person under eighteen years of age, lax or is unable to display upon demand of any law enforcement officer a safety education certificate issued by this state or under the authority of another state or province of Canada, unless, unless such person is in the process of taking a safety education training class under the direct supervision of a certified ATV safety instructor. And that's all covered in twenty-three VSA thirty-five six. So some of these, I'm, I'm reading the ordinance, because I, I want people to realize, we're not just pulling, we're not just making it up.
Or if every single one of these has an ordinance that reference it, reference somewhere, every, every violation.
Yeah, every violation, that, that, that is correct, but I'm not gonna, I'm just not gonna, I'm just gonna stop reading it, unless I think, unless I think people really want to hear. Uh.
I know.
Alright, on any town highway not open to ATVs by the select board, except to cross at a ninety degree angle if load structure prevents a quick and safe crossing, and provided that the operator comes to a complete stop before entering the highway and yields the right of way to motor vehicles and pedestrians. And again, I think I'm gonna throw into here, in red bold, it's not here right now, it's the one place I missed it, that that does not include US route seven and three forty-six. Those are strictly off limits, no matter what.
And or railroad.
And or railroad tracks.
He hunts on his own path.
Okay, on any state or public, uh, or Pownau public land that not designated by the select board, or this state, or used by ATVs. Um, or seventeen, after causing or becoming involved in any accident resulting in injury to any person or property other than the operator's ATV, without immediately stopping to render reasonably necessary assistance and providing the operator's name, residence, registration number, and the name of the owner of the ATV to the injured party or person who property is damaged. Well, we have to, that's covered, that's. Uh, without bringing the ATV to a stop when signaled to do so by a law enforcement officer wearing identifying insignia or operating a law enforcement vehicle sounding a siren or displaying a flashing blue or blue and white signal lamp, thereby attempting to elude the law officer, the law enforcement officer. Um, and then the, the statute. While traveling at a speed exceeding twenty-five miles per hour, or such lower speed as may be posted, ATV riders are also asked to slow to ten miles an hour in front of residences. So that's not part of the, I mean, we're just asking them to be, to be respectful. Uh, uh, but also requiring that they do not, they can't go more than twenty-five, unless they adhere to the speed limits, unless. Uh, while traveling in any manner other than single file, while failing to observe any other traffic rules and, and control devices that apply to town highways. And then we go into a couple more, a couple more sections, those were, those were all of the additional enforcement mechanisms, or additional rules, right? Uh, additional rules. The enforcement officer is, is authorized to recover several penalties for operation of an ATV, ATV in excess of disposable, disposable speed limit as specified in, I think I need to insert the travel, the, the traffic ordinance, the, the name of the traffic ordinance in here. If we could get that, I'll, I'll insert it in. And in the state of Vermont's judicial bureau penalty schedule. Law enforcement, and so, that's one, I've got that highlighted, reading, requires, uh, requires, uh, uh, it requires something to be inserted. Law enforcement will issue a ticket for up to two hundred and fifty dollars under VSA, uh, three ten, uh, thirty-five ten, thirty-five twelve. Now, we can, we can change that, that's open for debate. I've seen things up to five hundred, and I've seen, uh, down to like one hundred, it's the third sentence. The two fifty, in the way I've got, this is more common on the ordinances I looked at, I looked at quite few. Uh, uh, for the ordinances I've looked at, two fifty is pretty common. Uh, and then, uh, and then we have a, a schedule here. The enforcement officer is authorized to recover several penalties for violations of this ordinance as set out below. First offense fifty, waiver fee thirty-five, second offense one hundred, waiver fee seventy. Third, each subsequent offense, subsequent offense is two fifty with a waiver fee of two twenty-five. And then I wanna, I wanna regress some of these, uh, there's. So the enforcement officer is, is authorized to recover a waiver fee in lieu of a civil penalty in the stated amount for any person who declines to contest a municipal complaint and pays the waiver fee. So pretty much, uh, yes, I'm guilty, I'll pay the two hundred and twenty-five instead of two hundred and fifty. I'll just pay it now and not, not contest. So that's basically what the, what the waiver fee is.
And the way I understand it, it does not come to the town, it goes to the law enforcement, correct?
Now, where does the fine run, Bill?
That's where we need to get them.
That, we need to, uh, that's where we need to talk to.
That's why I asked the sheriff, right, where the money went to.
I mean, basically.
I didn't get a straight answer.
Yeah, basically, those.
Then prove it, answer.
Them and the state.
Well, I think, I think that's, definitely research out.
Well, that's what.
We do need to research it, um, but, but for me, uh, we have succeeded if people are obeying these laws. Uh, I, I certainly don't wanna be in a position where we're, where we're relying on, on penalties, because the penalties ought to be handed out for, for actual, uh, for actual infractions, not because we need the money. And I just, I just worry about the sense of.
This is the traffic laws.
Ah, okay, alright, and. She made that for me.
Actually, she took it to me, but I'm giving it to you.
Alright, and now, there, there are a couple other things, uh, we go, uh, this is, was very important to me, and I wanted it in here, and it wasn't in all the ordinances I read, but when I saw it, I knew I wanted it in our ordinance. The town may ban an operator from use on any town highway after the first or any subsequent, uh, offense. And the reason, the reason that's, that's important is because the first offense can be doing donuts in somebody's lawn. If that's your first offense, we're pulling your stick.
We're leaving it.
You're, you're not running anymore.
There's somebody staring up a freshly driven road, don't, I remember that.
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah, so, so we have the, the, the subjective authority to determine whether or not that was an egregious offense. You know, if you come off the mountain, uh, at nine fifteen, that's probably your first offense, it's not a big deal. Uh, 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 but if you're, if you, if you're deliberately targeting anybody, if you're, if you're engaged in this sort of a reckless endangerment or anything like that, we're, we're, uh, we're gonna pull your stick. And you're not getting your money back. It's a big bad clear. Alright, so that was very important. And then enforced violation, uh, the violation of this ordinance shall be a civil matter which may be enforced in the Vermont Judicial Bureau according to Division twenty-four VSA nineteen seventy-four eight, in nineteen seventy-seven. Uh, for purposes of enforcement, judicial authority, any, any enforcement officer shall have the authority to issue tickets, and maybe, and maybe the hearing officer at any hearing. Uh, other laws, this ordinance is in addition to all other ordinance of the town and all applicable laws of the state of Vermont. All ordinances or parts of ordinances, resolutions, regulations, or other documents inconsistent with provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed to the extent of such inconsistency. Uh, severability, if any section of this ordinance is held by a court, uh, uh, of competent jurisdiction to be invalid, such findings shall not invalidate, invalidate any other part of this ordinance. And then the effective date, this ordinance shall become effective sixty days after its adoption by the select board. Petition is filed under twenty-four VSA nineteen seventy-three, that statute shall govern, take effect, this ordinance. And that's it, that's, that's the whole ordinance.
The only thing I would take from under, uh, on the road somewhere, like, our, what's the municipality? I don't wanna say town property, but municipality property, fireworks, sewer, treatment facility, and plant, uh, the transfer station, and the highway department. Uh, smart. For use.
I got you, I, 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 I do understand, uh, let me, uh, let me find where that statement is.
I don't wanna say town property, because eventually we'd like to take it, to both.
Develop the town.
To see, to see the town property.
Well, I think, when it says town property, it's not, not, not specifically designated for that purpose, it's the way I like.
Well, you could, right, you could, you could word it, you could word it. All ATVs used is banned from municipal, all municipal property. All the, unless defined under.
Right, exactly, yeah. Uh, actually, I, that's section eight, that's operation on public property and cemeteries. I have seen a B for your section in this, and I will find it, and I'll put it back in. And it, and it covered all of that. Wastewater Treatment Facility, um, uh, anything, any town property not specifically designated for that use.
Yeah, because if we gained access to all of them, to the primary property.
Right, that, that's right.
You know.
But that burn, we're not supposed to be running on there, that was better money.
Well, well, no, they, there, there is that trust, which specifically means ATVs is a possibility.
On the other side of the river.
On the other side of the river.
I'm talking about the wastewater side.
Oh, yeah, that's.
That, that burn would put there, basically, the problem, and protect the waterway, you know, like that stuff.
Right, I know.
Beyond there.
See, now we only have like five minutes on our backs.
Okay, so, um, so, uh, so let me run through this, and, uh, just for the, the comments. So we went through this, and we made a couple of comments here. We changed, uh, we changed the timing, uh, to be seven AM to nine PM.
Yep.
We changed the dates to run to, from May fifteenth to December first. Um, I'm gonna add some wordage, add some verbiage, and I'll just have to trust me on the words, uh, to come up with something to address the no loop. Like, that's not back and forth riding, but you're making a loop.
Right.
And I, and those tours are not permitted, it's, that's using our, our roads as a.
Well, yeah, you know, maybe we should, there's, there's, there's a perfect thing right there. Um, because, because rumor has it, I don't know if this is true or not, rumor has it, that some of these modified off-road vehicles, there are people who are selling guided tours, but.
I was just gonna bring that up, is there any way that we could, nobody can make any kind of?
Like, right, so, so.
So they can't do business on the side.
Exactly, exactly, so that I couldn't start up and say.
Like a hayride or something, anything.
Put up my, my, a business card in the, you know, somewhere in Connecticut, where I'm gonna give you a tour of Pownau, Vermont on an ATV.
Exactly.
And I'd buy five side by sides and rent them out to you and your family on the weekend. You definitely should do something.
Exactly, yeah, definitely.
That should be in their lives.
I was thinking the same thing, because I've heard where somebody said, you can do hayrides or whatever, and I just don't.
I think a hayride's not bad.
Well, they're pulling on the ATV.
Well, yeah, well, that's.
That's different.
Has anybody seen language that, uh, that would strictly prohibit that? And then, and then we gotta think about where, I mean, let's say, uh, a year from now, Bassett completes that trail.
Hmm.
And, and now, now the, uh, why would we wanna prevent somebody from starting a business if it's up in there, and they have, they have an offload area?
Yeah, but we don't want them on town roads.
But weren't we only doing this for a year anyways, to see how?
Um.
I thought we were doing this for a year.
Well, there was.
I, that, that language is.
So, didn't we discuss that?
We did, and I, and I think that, yeah, I think the one caller, Mr. Thompson, I think, had, in my opinion, had a really valid point in, in a test period.
First day.
Um, I, I just, I think that was a really, really valid point, um.
I just want people out there to realize that we're not rushing this through, this has been a ongoing thing for years and years and years and years, and we're just trying to do our job. Our job is to make the ordinance.
I, I just think, I think the test period is a really valid point.
And I think that maybe a one-year trial, and then reevaluate it after it's.
But I also think we should, I think we should address that tour.
Yeah.
Yes.
Somewhere, sometime now, yeah. Or we don't, we don't allow that to happen. You know.
They would have to have a permit anyways, wouldn't they?
Well, I, yeah, I think that's true, I think if somebody was starting a business, we would have to hear what the business was, and how it would be managed before we see it. And so, and because they have to go before the BRB, because they have to do other things, or do that, uh, we'll have an opportunity to weigh in on.
That's only if they were, if they were a friend.
Right, right.
What if they're just riding the mall, he's not gonna take you on a trip.
Right. Uh, right, right, I.
Yeah, sometimes you have to come to.
The tour of Pownau, so you're gonna pick and do a big look around.
I think, I think.
Yeah, and that's using the loops, I mean, that's breaking the loops, right, so that's already, that's already.
But I still, I still think we should address that tour in some hour.
Tour of the Taste of Pownau, it's sugar and season or something, I mean.
Uh, no, I mean, let's face it, foliage is a huge thing.
Right, exactly.
Huge.
We don't wanna do, no, we don't wanna be part of that.
Yeah, just my opinion.
I agree.
Um, well, here's, in my, and I, I agree, if, if what they're doing, if anybody is thinking about inviting people in, to use our roads as trails to go look at foliage, or uh, taste maple syrup, or whatever, that should be off, that should be off limits. And it is by the ordinance, because using our roads as a trail is not permitted. But if somebody, but hang on, if somebody wanted to actually, uh, come up with some kind of business where, uh, uh, you know, you can rent an ATV for me, and I, and you have a place up by the Bassett Trail, and you're actually to do it, why wouldn't we invite that additionally?
I don't think that's what I'm saying, I'm saying, if I'm, if I'm gonna start my little business, I'm gonna go around, you can buy five brand new machines, and I'm gonna start my tour of Pownau on, on an ATV, where the southern.
Right, but that's, that is explicitly prohibited already, because that's using our roads as trails.
Well, well, if we don't define it, somebody's gonna try it.
But it is defined, I mean, that's what I'm saying, I think, I think it's in.
Well, I'm gonna see it spelled out. Right, right, I, I'd like to see that spelled out, for sure.
And, uh, I need some language for that.
I know, I'm not saying it's easy, I'm just saying I think it just needs to be defined.
People in trigger houses, they wanna take you to do a tour on.
And that's.
I mean, if it's on the private property, that's one thing, but not to be going to the pointy, pointy.
I guess, but your, your economic development may want to do something. So take you to do a tour of the trigger house, and have each one have a thing.
So take your car, yeah.
Exactly, or rock.
I'm just throwing it out there.
Get some duck towards bar for his car.
That, that was the purpose of a lot of these other towns, changing the, the original hours were like from eight to six, and they went to seven to eight at night, so.
We're not out of town, we just wanna pass the ordinance.
I'm just throwing it out there.
And see how this works.
I, I'd like to see something like, like that, like, no tours or whatever, I'd, I'd like to see that.
Right.
And I don't know, I, you know, I don't wanna sit here and try to, I don't wanna sit here and try to come up with.
Yeah, 'cause it is eight oh three.
Yeah, we don't have a hard stop.
No, we don't, we did go over fifteen minutes for a couple comments.
So we're not.
So, and we're almost there.
But look, we're good for two hours on tune, right?
I'm gonna go root comment. Okay, um, I wanna say, uh,
Oh, resume, sorry.
Explicitly prohibit using our roads, using town roads for tours, for tours, continue, it, it's kind of the same as the loop, right? I mean, if you get the loop language, I think we nailed this. And it, and maybe it's all part of the same.
Mm-hmm.
So explicitly prohibit using town roads for tours, loops, uh, uh.
Or any money-making.
Well, it's not just money-making, right, so I, I.
That's true, they could do it without making money.
Right, yeah, I could invite five friends over and say, hey, let's go ride on our roads, and you know, this loop. But that, that, it's the same, it's the same, uh, it's the same point that we heard in public comments, that it is the loop, but now it's sort of an organized loop.
Right.
Uh, organized or even single, so let me do that, for loops.
On our long ride, we're gonna go down to see Andy, so she can make us some sandwiches.
Can't be long, I have time, please.
You can't get there legally.
Throwing it out.
We're gonna park up, say, and drive long now.
So, uh, so, how about this, I'll take my best stab at this, and at the language here, and I think I've got it, right? We are, this is not, this isn't the language, but this is what we're trying to.
Hmm.
Because when we, uh, because I, I think what we need to do at this point is send this over to Bob Fisher, and, and, and have him run it through the, run it through, and maybe he'll come up with better language for this. But, uh, but I wanna make sure you understand intent, so the intent is to explicitly prohibit you, using town roads for tours, for loops, uh, organized or ad hoc, uh, and, uh, uh, or anything, or anything else, or any other, other, uh, use of roads. Other, other, uh, use of roads as, uh, uh. As continuous travel, honestly, that's continuous, continuous travel. And I'm just gonna put here, this is Bob's notice, the intent is to open roads. To get to dri- riding locations. Any use. Any use that uses town roads. As the riding location. Needs to be strictly prohibited.
I'm gonna have to throw.
Yeah, it is, but I mean, if somebody starts a business.
It's like, all these roads are loops. Guy could start off down, you know, down in the village of Southbound, comes up through somewhere, and they go off, and then they say, well, I ain't going back there. It was like, it's a street, what did the guy do, made route?
Well, well, that's true, but that's it.
And I, I would always climb next, I said, you what, I'm lost, must've took a turn, I'm a old man, hell, you took a turn, I'm turned.
Well, the rest is so.
Don't be given, we're on TV, remember, you're on TV.
I'm just giving the example.
I, I, I think it's, uh, we, we do wanna make the intent very clear of what this is, but how, now, that same situation, if I were to take this route. To get to this legal, training a riding, and then take this route home, I'm in compliance.
Right.
But if I take this route and it's all town roads, I'm not in compliance. I, I didn't go to a riding location, I used the roads as my riding.
Right.
So, uh, uh, that's what's gonna be, that is the thing. And I'll probably lean on people who word things better than I. Alright, um, so with the, uh, and so, uh, so to be clear. Uh, I'm gonna add language to make this a one-year trial.
Yes.
And I, and so by a one-year trial, it can be less than a year, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say something like, the select board will revisit its first meeting in January, with Angela, finish the season. We'll have looked at, uh, uh, you know, what, what were the pros, the cons, the, uh, the issues that we had, did it actually make things better? There were a lot of different opinions on that. Um, uh, and, uh, and is it something that we can continue? Or is it something we can continue with some adjustments, you know, what adjustments do we need to make in the ordinance in order to make everybody happy? Um, but we, you're never gonna get there unless we actually see what's gonna happen with the ordinance.
Right.
Um.
It should be just like a policy, revisit every year, or every two years.
Yeah.
Should be a specific time that we revisit.
And so I'll put that in, I'm gonna put in explicitly prohibited using town roads for tours, we just talked about that. I'll put in, uh, that beefier language around Route seven, three forty-six railroad tracks for item number fifteen. Um, I will put in, uh, 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 oh, I'm gonna add to the FAQs, which is different than the ordinance. The size of, uh, the size of the decal and the lettering, four-inch, four-inch numbers, um.
I had one person send an email saying that they think three stickers is a little overkill, because of the amount that they paid for their vehicle, I have no idea.
I saw that.
Alright, so it's.
That could be true, I mean, I'm thinking about, slap them on that vehicle, so.
Well, it's, look, it, if you, if, in, in here's, here's my, um.
I'm just worried, do you think one would be okay?
Here's my comeback to that, if you, if you ride a snowmobile.
It's on both sides?
You have to have your snowmobile, you have to have your stickers on your snowmobile.
And I know on both, it's on both sides as well, too.
And that's a hobby, and, and if you have a boat.
Yes.
It's all recreational.
Okay, I should be there.
So, so, you know, these hobbies, whatever, it's, it's, one hobby doesn't supersede the other as far as I'm concerned. And the, my reason for the rear sticker versus both just left and right, is if that law enforcement officer comes on to the rear of the vehicle.
I know who it is.
Right, lights and sirens. They don't stop, they have that number.
There's a camera on foot.
Oh, that's just.
And that's a good, uh, that's a good question, uh, question and recommendation you could get from this guy. This is my bottom.
Okay.
And then I, I'm gonna beef up the section on operation of public property in cemeteries, uh, I'm gonna beef that up and include wastewater treatment facility and anything else that makes sense. I, I've seen some good language.
The, the only other thing that I wanted to bring up was, um, it came to all of us in an email, and I thought it was a really good idea.
Oh, yes.
I'm not sure how we could do it, there's definitely be a question for, um, Bob Fisher, and I, I don't wanna spend a lot of time on trying to word it in there, Bob, and I don't. But having a resident. For lack of a better term, watchdog type of person that was appointed by the select board, that maybe could go out on a Saturday afternoon. Um, on an ATV that was.
ATV watcher, like the fast watcher.
Type of thing, and I, I just, I, and I don't know how we can make it work, and I don't know if we could.
The only thing that concerns me about that is.
Well, I think there's, there's some liability, I'm sure, I'm sure.
Everybody getting hurt.
I'm sure there's a lot of liability, I just thought it was a really, really good idea.
I agree.
That where somebody, the, the, the resident came up with it, that I, I thought was a really good idea. Maybe it's not a good idea, but I thought it was a really good idea to try to, you know, somebody that knows, you know, a lot of the people who ride out there, I mean, you know, maybe it's somebody.
Right here, it was, um. An idea of self-restraint seems. The work instead of appointing a part-time safety officer.
There you go.
Not police responsible, one whose responsibility would be to enforce, say, riding on the town roads with authority given to them by the select board. He or she should be provided access to an ATV work so no many, an ATV so they can work so many hours a week. Employed by the town with funds earned from the stickers, sales, and tickets issued to those. For the safety rules outlined in your ordinance, just a thought.
So, uh, we, uh, it, it is, uh.
And that was my jump to the end, and I thought it was great.
I think it is a good idea, um, uh, I'm not sure, uh, I'm not sure how we would enforce it, uh, I mean, how we would enact it, um, so one thing to think about, if we sell. You know, a hundred tickets for thirty-five bucks a pop, that's only thirty-five hundred dollars.
Right, right.
By thirty-five hundred bucks, we then have to, and in the first year, I think a lot of that goes to sign. Um, so it does.
I'm not gonna disagree, I, I, I just, I thought that was something that we should at least, um, explore a little bit, because I, I really thought it was a great idea, plus it gives that.
People can see that there's somebody out there watching.
Well, you give that local, you give a little bit of a local.
And maybe we could do something, maybe we could do some volunteerism in that. Um, so get some people who are activists, but that's where the clubs come in too, the clubs can provide a lot of that.
But I, I, the only thing they have with the club is, you know, the club, they go out and they ride together, so to speak, you know, they're on their club ride. You know, on a Saturday or Sunday or whatever it is, I think if you had just that one person as a safety officer, which I think is a pretty good term, um, but, you know. I don't know, I, you know, I just thought it was a really good idea.
Basically bringing back the council for. The ATVs.
My, the look on my face is just the cost.
Oh, no, my, I, I understand, I, I totally get it. Right, I totally understand, I, you know, and I, I, I totally get the cost part of it.
Actually, that could be something that comes out in our, in our January review, do we think that would have been a, do we think that that would add to enforcement, how self policing would work? Um, uh, did the clubs, did we provide enough of that, did we bring enough, did we identify the bad players, get the uninsured, unregistered off the road? Uh, not entirely, uh, none, there's nothing we're gonna do, I, I just need to make this comment, there is nothing that the board could possibly do that's going to eliminate all problems. So, we're going to have some issues, now, the, 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 the real, uh, the real, uh, uh. Evaluation of whether or not this was effective, is did things get better for most, when, at the end of the season? And if they got better for most, and we solved the, the, uh, a lot of the problems, and brought it under some better control than it is today, then we're heading in the right direction. And we know that this was better than we had before, and then we can talk about the, you know, the incremental changes, now incrementally, what can we add to this that's gonna make it, that's gonna make it better? I, yeah, I saw, I, I really liked that email too, but I, but I, my, my, my thought.
Oh, yeah, no.
How we're gonna pay for it.
No, I'm not gonna disagree with that at all, not, you know.
And if he works too much, and it's health insurance, and it's a town employee, and someone, and buy him an ATV, right?
No, I, there, there's, there's certainly downsides to it, I just thought there was, you know, there was a potential, I guess there's a potential for a lot of positive outcomes and something like that.
There could be something in between, where you get, you know, some volunteers who are responsible citizens who are out there, but they would.
Yeah, no, for sure.
Not with the snowmobile.
People might block out the self policing.
What is the snow?
Right, exactly, well, that's true.
That's the stuff that you gotta send to me without a monitor, right?
They don't pay those things.
I really don't, I really don't, I'm totally against that, but you understand. Groups, got their friends, somebody ate their friend while, while the time they had, it's a man. I'm, I'm totally against.
Uh, I, that's just my opinion. My opinion, so I, I.
It's your point.
It's your point. Um, and I, I think, let's see how self policing works, maybe we'll.
I think that's the secret to the thing, that's the, the answer of all problems. If people wanna use the roads, then they should respect the opportunity mentioned, and they should be monitoring, all of them. To be monitored, to, to get rid of the bad app, to rid of the bad app.
And what I'm seeing, that, I think that, I think that's gonna be much more successful than some of the people are saying, it's not gonna work at all. I think that's gonna be far more successful, today, you don't have, uh, you, you have kids running, uh, driving too fast on the road. Because they want to get to their driving location bef- without getting caught. You don't have a lot of the, uh, you don't have the clubs operating, you don't have people out there policing, a- and really, uh, uh, uh. Enforcing that sort of respectful, uh, respect for driving, and that's why a lot of these stuff, some of it doesn't have teeth, most of it does, some of it doesn't. Like the thing, we, we, we ask you to slow down in front of residents, you know, I, I, I think you're gonna see a lot more of that than, than, than the alternative. There's still gonna be the yahoos, there's still gonna be a couple of yahoos out there that, that are blown by, but I think you're gonna see a lot more respectful, uh. Uh, respectful use of ATVs with passage of this ordinance, I firmly believe that, I really fully disagree with that, uh, that's for I.
I think opening up the roads is gonna alleviate some of the problems on certain couple of roads, because I'll have more of a chance to go and get the directions. I'll be on point A, I'll be on point B, with C.
That's true too, and then if, and then, uh, as a board, when we start looking at that, at that other property, and find a way to get into that property, and structure, that's gotta be structured too. Because that property is not, we have to make that clear, when we, when we start talking about making that legal for ATVs. It's gotta be on specific trails, because it should also be legal for hiking, for hunting, for many other recreational things.
Yes.
And so we, and so, when we make that legal, or if we end up making that legal, we should, it's actually the process.
Yes, yes.
It's gonna be, these are ATV trails, this is a hiking trail, uh, you know, and hunting is allowed during hunting season. And, and, and make sure that everybody can regulate in the same area, and they can go to it.
People need to start respecting one another again.
Yes.
Alright, anything else?
Uh, I'm done.
A motion to adjourn?
Go move.
Second?
Second.
Wow.
Um, oh, uh, discussion?
Oh, any discussion, sorry.
Sorry, just a little discussion, so, uh, uh, do we agree that I'm gonna go ahead and beef this up in the ways that, that we just talked about, and then we're gonna send it out on the bottom?
Yes.
To, to legal.
Yes.
And, and then you'll, uh, you'll either bless it or tell us that this will never work, or whatever.
Yes.
I also want a quick thing before, sorry, um, before we do adjourn, I do think once we get. A final draft that's been approved, um, by Bob Fisher, by attorney, then I think we should invite the law enforcement in specifically. For them to read it here, and, and, and to bring up any concerns that they have. And I'll reach out to, um, the National Forest guys at that time. Um, and bring them in as well as our local law enforcement.
Okay.
If nobody's gonna object to that, I just, I think that that would probably.
Send a copy to James Smith too.
I don't, well, we can, you know, I don't have a problem with that, I just, I just think the next step after we get improved ordinance from, from, or, you know, a, a hard, hard copy draft.
Right.
Uh, would be to bring in the law enforcement.
And to be clear, that this has been, the draft was sent to, was, was it?
Yes, yes.
And the, and the other thing I wanna, I, the other thing I wanna point out is most law enforcement that I've talked to will listen to what you, and I've talked to a few, you know, I'm not gonna drop these things. Um, and, and the reason is to respect their, uh, what they're saying, but most of what they, what I've heard is, the ordinances are up in town. What you're saying sounds reasonable, it's workable, but it's not a, uh, that's not a, uh, but it, it's not up to the law enforcement to let town use for.
Or.
To, for ordinances, but if it's, if it's gonna be something that's gonna make their jobs much more difficult, and certainly they're gonna be forthcoming and let us know that. Um, uh, but for the ones that I talked to, they said specifically, I'm not gonna endorse or oppose, because that's not our place.
Any more discussion?
I think I'm done.
I think so.
Oh, uh, I.
I.
Right.
I.
Right, and you, I, thank you, everybody, have a good night, be safe.
Thank you.